One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Present.
Ms. Angena Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erko.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Opening statement.
Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, public law nineteen seventy-five, C two thirty-one sunshine law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you very much. So, you know, as the tradition, every March, we have a presentation of our preliminary budget. So, take it over, John.
Yes, sure. So, we have the twenty twenty-six preliminary budgets. Not much of a presentation. We'll see that at the budget hearing.
Not presentation, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll see that at the budget hearing.
Correct.
Dr. Alderelli, more than myself, will dazzle you with our public speaking skills. That being said, we have a budget roughly three hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, of which two hundred and thirty-five is the local tax base. This budget allocates money towards, obviously, contractual increases in salaries, healthcare, expansion of courtesy busing, some new programs, continued use of the local funding of pre-K, and other things. Roughly twenty-two million in capital projects. So, all in all, it's a great thing for the district and for the taxpayers. Thanks.
All right, so this is just a preliminary. We send to the state, and the final presentation will be in May, and we can make adjustments for, you know, for the final, between now and May. Okay? So, since this is due this month, so we're gonna have a motion to approve the preliminary budget. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Vishal Patel and Ronak Patel.
Okay. Mr. Erko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Angena Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, President comments. Yeah, so, you know, we have worked very hard with the administration and John, especially the Finance Facility Committee. And as you can see, on the agenda, the tax levy is flat. So, that means no tax increase for Edison taxpayers, no increase for taxpayers. Five years in a row, five years in a row, there is no other school district was able to achieve that. No school district was able to do it in New Jersey. And this is, we all know, we had, we lost a grant for six million dollars for our pre-K program. We paid it with our reserve, and it's a public information. We lost another two and a half million dollars this year from the state aid. Despite with all these, you know, eight point five million dollars, we're still able to deliver a budget with no tax increase to the taxpayers. So, a thank to the administration team, a thank to the Finance Facility Committee on this, and we're gonna work more on the details. You're gonna see the detailed presentation in May. Thank you. So, Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shi. Pardon my voice tonight, as the seasons kinda change. Along comes my allergies as well. So, I'm going, my voice is a little bit raspy here than normal this evening, so please forgive me. But as the weather has definitely changed, it looks like we are in the midst of getting out correspondence in relationship to our two built-in emergency days. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, the district will remain closed on those days as scheduled within the calendar. It is the extension of spring break the following Monday, as well as the Friday before Memorial Day. Information in relationship to that will be forthcoming out of our office most likely tomorrow. A couple other pieces before I get into the agenda. I had the opportunity, one of the greatest, you know, parts of my job is when I'm able to get out into schools, especially during Read Across America time. Yeah, I was a former elementary principal, so it, I get right back into my wheelhouse with, you know, riling up the kids and then leaving them for the teachers to kinda calm down at that time. It was one of my specialties as a principal, too. And then handing out like extra recess and all of that other stuff, too. All the things that you weren't supposed to do. But I just wanna thank all of our teachers, our building-level administrators, and everybody that participated in the event, right? Not only fosters the love of reading, but just a great time to get in and out of classrooms. I wanna kind of harp on and piggyback on what Mr. Shi said, or President Shi said. We're in the midst of budget season right now. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Toth and his team for the tireless work. You know, he's usually relegated to his office, you know, from January on, and has had multiple meetings in relationship to this. I wanna thank the work of the Finance Committee meeting. I wanna thank every principal, supervisor, assistant principal, anybody that's kinda contributed to the efforts for this year. And we will be doing a formal presentation in our upcoming meeting in April. Last but not least, always a highlight, subscription busing information went out on Monday, I believe, of this week. Information, and we will be periodically updating and reminding parents about the window and eligibility and things along those lines. I'm gonna move on to the agenda items. We have a pretty light agenda. For the board, we have our second reading of the policies from our previous board agenda, which were approved. These policies are in the final form and ready to roll for your approval. You have the approval of our HIB report for February. We also want to acknowledge a resolution that is on the board. April twenty twenty-five is Autism Acceptance Month, a time to foster understanding and acceptance of autism within the community, as well as celebrate neurodiversity. Moving along to the curriculum and instruction section, we have the approval of a few field trips that are there, as well as our professional development for our staff. We have our final section for this, which is our student services, the approval of our out-of-district placements, as well as one professional service contract for the board. And that will conclude my report, Mr. Shi. Actually, it'll conclude mine. I'm gonna turn it over now to my colleague, Mr. Toth, for the finance resolutions. Thank you, Dr. Alderelli. My section is pretty lean as well. We don't have, other than the standard, you know, monthly financials and minutes bills list, which is all there. No contract awards or procurement items at this time. Facilities, we have one change order on the J.P. Stevens additions and alterations project. It's for twenty-nine thousand dollars. There's gonna be some additional gas, electric, fire pump, cabling, and access points for the new addition. Twenty-nine thousand, it's gonna be charged to the allowance, so there's no change in the contract. So, that's great news. Grants, we are gonna accept a new grant, so it's called the Project Lead the Way Grant for fourteen thousand for JP. So, thank you to all that applied for that, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Lopez. We appreciate that. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much. Very lean and short agenda. Now, we are open for public comments. So, yes.
Good evening. Matt Revnak, President of the Edison Township Education Association, the ETA. I'm here to speak about the funding for our school system, including the zero percent tax levy budget. As you are aware, the Edison School System has had their state funding cut by three percent for a total of just over two point eight million dollars. Prices for everything from basic school supplies to utilities are rising. The district is now at a deficit in funding in comparison to this past year based on these conditions. This does not even include the unknowns that are occurring at the federal level with the cutting of the Department of Education, which occurred today, or executive order, and cuts in funding for breakfast programs, lunch programs, which I will address on Tuesday. The Board of Education has adopted a zero percent budget for the past four years. I am also a taxpayer, and yes, I prefer that my taxes do not rise, at least not significantly. However, if you raise the taxes or levy of a hundred and twenty dollars, that comes out to thirty-three cents a day. I don't know anything I can buy for thirty-three cents, but an investment in the future of our children and our country, to me, is worth thirty-three cents a day. The law allows the board to raise property taxes to fund their schools by two percent. Had the board adopted even a one percent increase over the past four years, that would bought an additional twenty-five million dollars cumulative over that time, money which could have been used to further the necessary construction that has been taking place. The math just doesn't add up. Prices are rising, new programs are being added, more clubs and sports, all important things to the benefit of our students and their experiences. Yet, funding needed to pay for these things are now going, is now going down. We have been fortunate that the state funding has increased for Edison over the past four years. That well has now dried up. It is naive to think that the state at some point was going to continue to fund the district at the level it has, knowing that there has been no tax increase to the local taxpayer for the last four years. Raising the tax revenue by even one percent this year would offset the loss in state funding. The primary purpose of the Board of Education is to make sure that the students of Edison receive the best education available based upon a fiscally responsible budget. I do not wanna see the Edison schools negatively impacted, as had happened about fifteen years ago. Staff was cut, which affected class sizes. Programs were eliminated or changed, and not for the better. The possibility of eliminating co-curriculum in sports programs, for example. Many of the other districts around the state, including one of our neighbors, East Brunswick in Middlesex County, are having these exact issues as we're speaking. Bertha was another one. Thank you. These districts have to make unwanted decisions, perhaps taking some drastic measures based on funding cuts. In closing, I wish to state that the future of the Edison School District is in your hands. I don't envy the decisions that you have to sometimes make. However, it is fiscally irresponsible to continue on a zero percent budget tax levy, and I challenge you to work alone with your chief administration, namely, your superintendent, your business administrator, and their staff, to consider the funding process and the proposed zero budget before sending it to the county superintendent for approval. Thank you for listening and for your consideration in this matter. And I would just like to ask, because I do have something else to say later, I like to save my minute and fifty seconds in case I need it later on. Thank you. But that was not about the budget, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, you mentioned about, you know, staff cut and program cutting. It's not gonna happen. Okay? We tighten up our belt on some other areas, but not, not anything that our students experience. So, you will see the detailed budget at the next meeting. And if you wanna have a copy, I'm pretty sure that, you know, Mr. Toth will be happy to provide you a copy. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Hello. Dear Edison Board of Education members.
Name an address, please.
I'm getting there. I have a plan.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for your dedication towards the academics, emotional support, and safety for all the students of Edison. My name is Kim Lindley, a mom, a former teacher, and now been resident. Tonight, I would like to speak about rescinding policy five seven five six in lieu of the recent rulings that is not mandatory, and schools can choose to abolish it. Policy five seven five six is a catalyst to separate the child from the parent. This evening, I would like to review policy five seven five six and the breakdown of the teacher-parent relationship. Policy five seven five six is a school board policy that was suggested by Strauss Esme. Strauss Esme was the third party, is a third party to interrupt school board policies mandatory. This was told by Attorney Bruce Padola in the New York Post. The article, "Common Sense Prevails in New Jersey," as school districts allowed to drop transgender student policy after years-long fight by Kristin Femming. This particular policy encourages students to make complex decisions as young as five years old without parental involvement. In schools, distributing, aspirating, requiring parent, requires parental authorization. Going on a school trip and even taking a photo of requires parental authorization. Teachers are not required to inform parents of their child's gender identity. A separate folder is kept with the child's new gender and sent to the state. In the school, the student will be recognized by the new gender identity. Parents are notified that their child is being addressed as a new gender identity. The student is living a double life with parental knowledge. In addition, the school social worker is able to stand on behalf of the student when the parent will not be supportive of the new gender identity. How and when did the school become the moral fabric of a family? Policy five seven five six does not cause division. This policy divides the teachers and the parents who are critical people of lives. These two parties play a significant role on the child's development. When the teacher and the parents are working in tandem, students benefit. A recent article, "The Long-Term Impact of Parental Involvement: Academic Success and Beyond," is based on findings of numerous benefits when a successful relationship is formed. More high, more high school graduates, improved focus during lessons, more student participation, and more homework completions, to name just a few. Teachers are encouraged to have the clear communication lines with the parents due, due to all the positive outcomes. Policy five seven five six breaks that trust that is required to have a solid teacher-parent relationship. When a teacher does not have to reveal important information about that child, how do you trust? When would a parent know when to trust a teacher? What signals does the child get when they are advised that they don't have to tell mom or dad? This is extremely concerning in the elementary years of the student. The mom and the teacher are the two most important people in their lives. The HIP harassment policy has been established to protect all students. They can use this policy when they feel they are being bullied in school. The HIP harassment is in place for all students, and therefore, you can rescind policy five seven five six. In closing, please rescind policy five seven five six. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, you can go. It's public comments.
My name is Tarendra Lakankar. I'm Edison District resident. I am father of the son who is going to the middle school, now going high school next year. And I'm fighting this issue of equal opportunity for almost one year. And I had a meeting with a couple of people. I spoke to most of the board members, and still follow there is no equal opportunity provided to the students of Edison. We are picking top twenty percent of students and giving all opportunities. And those opportunities are also based on the grade, fifth grade, they're moving to sixth grade. Okay, you, since you, you categorizing those based on their skill in fifth grade. Kids can learn any time in their life. People can, if I fall in love in mathematics in seventh grade or eighth grade, I can do better. But your classroom systems allow them, hey, in the sixth grade, you have math, prime algebra, then seventh grade, algebra one, and geometry. What happens if kids cannot learn? So, that's one issue I'm fighting for from last one year, and I'm disappointed with the administration that even answering multiple emails, there's no response from your office. You mentioned that, okay, let's talk. Set up a meeting. I send them emails, but there is no response from your office in almost one year. Okay, why this matter? Why I'm bringing this issue to you, all of you here? Because, and one more thing, STEM, biomedical science, is a science, it's not math. Science, math also part of science, I understand. STEM, S-T-A-M, is also, there is a math is only one part, not three more parts are there. But what you're trying to do, you're picking geometry as the one criteria to bring the science. Okay, first is, again, your class division is a fifth grade, sixth grade. Second is the STEM, only geometry. Can we rethink on that admission process? Okay? Third thing, we are living in Edison's. I just spent two minutes, so three more minutes. We are living in Edison's. We are a lot of wealthy peoples, a lot of poor peoples, big diverse ground. Lot of people goes to different classes. We are a lot of classes in geometry, mathematics, right? What about those children who, who are, whose fathers are not enough money to pay the tuition fee? Two hundred dollars per month is tuition fee cost for learning mathematics. Can we think of that children also? Or we only become a children, schools for wealthy kids and give the chance for STEM Academy or biomedical science? Fourth thing, your placement, again, I brought you to, that your placement, why not give a chance at, because high school is a one step, big step for every kid, children's. Can you give a chance to equal up with all the students? Take a test, everybody. And where you want to go, go for that. Not from beginning, hey, sixth grade, you have prime algebra, seventh grade, algebra one, as a geometry, then only get chance. Can we think on that direction? I mentioned finals, buddy. Last, I mentioned briefly that late-brooming students. Students can learn anytime. Anytime they fall in love with subject, they can do much better in that subject. So, can you think on that direction also? So, my request, that what I'm asking for, for STEM and biomedical science program, allow larger pool of students to give the test. I'm not asking to increase the number of students for that particular program, but allow everyone to apply for them. Take a test, then select. I'm not asking extra seats, same number of seats, but larger pool of students, right? Second thing, reviewing the, see this, this policy might help to include everybody, whether wealthy or kids and poor kids. And that will also help to reduce the undue pressure in the seventh grade and sixth grade, hey, you have to go to geometry in eighth grade, then only you can qualify, otherwise, you're doomed. So, you're forcing that kids from sixth grade to all the way there. Let them grow naturally and let, take a test. Thank you very much. I hope to hear favorable response from board and administration.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to add, this year, we have increased the STEM population from twenty-four students to forty-eight students. And we also added the biomedical academy. And you raised the issue, and Superintendent sent an email to everyone, so everyone had a chance to apply. So, you wanna add some additional things?
Yeah, so, based on the feedback and the discussion, because we, we've had several conversations in relationship to this, that we did, we did open this up to every eligible eighth-grade student, regardless of path, anything along those lines. And any stu, and there's a rubric that, that was associated with that. Now, any student that did not have geometry did have the opportunity to take an assessment. As a matter of fact, we administered a few of those this week. Right? So, and Mr. Cohen could probably go into a little bit more in-depth detail with you. But yes, these, these components, especially with biomedical moving forward, we're open to all students, regardless of path, regardless of whether they took a geometry test. We open it up to everybody. The second point is, I a hundred percent agree with you. All kids can learn throughout any point in their life. That's why we're opening up pathways next year, too. So, for students that didn't meet that academic component, they can still take these exact same courses, the exact same courses. Our goal here, and part of our strategic plan, is that every student by the year of twenty thirty walks across the stage with a credential in one of the pathways of their choosing. Computer science, biomedical, pre-law, engineering, STEM. What else am I missing, Mr. Cohen? Esports. We're launching a robust platform in the year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
About ten, ten pathways.
In, in order to make sure that those students that might not do well on tests, right? I was one of those students. I, I didn't do well on tests, but I had aptitude and, and a drive and a desire. So, I wanna make sure that that pathway is good. I think of my own kids for those. They're not good test takers as well, but if they had these opportunities to take the pathways during their coursework, right, they might be sent on a little bit of a different path right now. As far as our meetings, I thought we had a couple of them scheduled. I don't know if it was my fault or not, whether I missed the mark, but my door is always open. I think the board will tell you. So, I would definitely love to continue the conversation in here. I've got a really bright guy in Mr. Cohen in relationship to these components of the pathways. But I agree with you. We're, we're moving forward with equal access, and there's going to be more information in relationship forthcoming, especially on Tuesday.
So, you know, as Dr. Alderelli said, you will hear more presentations on Tuesday, okay? And I think I have mentioned to you, one-on-one conversations, where more academies coming up. So, why don't you wait till Tuesday and look at what we are presenting, and then you can come back, right? So, so the thing that, you know, we open up everything to our students, okay? And if you wanna talk about STEM, it's too late because the process already started, okay? Okay, so, it's already started. We're already starting recruiting kids. We're not gonna go back. So, moving forward for next year, yeah, we can look into it. You said you've been, you've been doing this for a whole year. I was not on the board. I, I, you know, I'm sorry, but we did increase the population from twenty-four to forty-eight, okay? So, just leave us that, and come on Tuesday, take the presentation, you know, take a look at the presentation. Mr. Cohen's gonna present, and we can go from there. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Anthony Marra, five collateral court in Edison. I'm here again to speak about policy fifty-seven, fifty-six. And you're coming here for about a year. I've seen no substantial movement. In fact, I rarely get any, in fact, I don't think I get any comments. Others who spoke here today about the budget, but other matters, they get comments from the board, I get nothing. And now that did, did Kim. I mention God a lot when I speak here. And the reason I do that is because he gets the final word. You get the final decision as to what, whether to retain fifty-seven, fifty-six, but he gets the final word as to what happens as a result of your decision. Frank, if that doesn't put fear in someone's heart, I don't know what does. This board doesn't seem to have a fear of God. It seems to have a fear of the LGBTQ community. That's bad. You're not gonna stand before them on Judgment Day. You'll stand before God. He says in the Bible, "A man who remains stiff-necked after many rebukes will suddenly be destroyed without remedy." Of course, that applies not just to a person, it applies to governing organizations, bodies, boards, and so forth. Jesus said, "Have you not read that he created them from the beginning, made them male and female, two genders? It's not male, female, and a dozen others. For this reason, a man shall leave his father and mother and be joined to his wife, and the two shall become one flesh, so no longer two, but one." There's two genders. Unfortunately, the board doesn't seem to understand that. One of my favorites is the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. You can't argue with that rule. You can't. It's, it's fundamental. It's human nature. I'm confident there are members of the board here who are parents. Do you want done to you what you're doing to innocent parents? Keep them in the dark, because you know fifty-seven, fifty-six says, if a student says, "I'm changing my gender," and informs one of the school staff, you're to be kept in the dark. You're not to be told. That's ridiculous. The most important person in the student's life is mom and dad, and you keep them in the dark? That's wrong. If you don't like it, what do you do to other parents in Edison? That's hypocrisy, which leads me to the fifth commandment, honor your mother and your father. Are you honoring mom and dad by doing that? By keeping them in the dark? By saying, "Mom and dad, you have no right to hear what we've heard as, as educators, that your son or daughter wants to change gender"? That's absurd. You have every right to hear about what, how they're doing on their grades, in math, in science, all this, all the other subjects, but you have no right to hear about what, what your son or daughter's decided. You're not mom and dad. You're educators. In fact, you should be educating them about this, about the consequences. Not too long ago, I sent you a video about a girl named Peyton McNabb, high school student playing volleyball, and a student on the other team was a transgender student. He spiked the ball right at her. She suffered traumatic brain injury. She's not the same person anymore. Is that what you want? Is that what has to happen in Edison? One of the students gets injured by a transgender student in an athletic event? Maybe a lawsuit? I, I know that perks ears. No one wants that. Is that what has to happen here? Hey, gosh. And of course, you've got males sharing wrestling. And of course, you've got males sharing restrooms with, with the girls. And that, that is an abomination. But what about regret? Student says, I'm going to change gender. He does so. Five years later, ten years, however many, however long it goes by, oh my gosh, what have I done? Oh, whatever, what a terrible decision I've done. I, I can no longer have children, or it's likely to happen, it's substantially reduced. What are you going to say to that student? We gave you what you wanted? Is that what you say to the student? Suppose you said, I want a hypodermic needle with drugs in it, illegal drugs so I can shoot up. Would you give him that? I, I think not, of course not. Well, that's basically what you're doing. Because that student is taking hormone blockers, maybe has had surgery to alter his, his or her body, including reproductive organs. He can't have children anymore, she can't have children anymore. What are you going to say to that student? He comes back five years later, ten years later. Why didn't you stop me? We gave you what you want. Is that what you're going to say to him? Oh my gosh. Then of course, there's unfortunately, the, the tragic reality of increased suicide. Even the LGBT community doesn't deny that. And I remember at the October meeting, many of the LGBT community testified to that. And it is tragedy. But keeping fifty-seven, fifty-six does not stop that. If anything, I think it increases it because the statistics show the increase of suicide is there for the LGBT community. You need to wipe out this policy. Abolishing fifty-seven, fifty-six does not transgress New Jersey law. New Jersey law against discrimination remains in effect. What you need to do is to adopt a policy where a student is counseled about the, the consequences of trying to change gender. Please abolish this policy. Please abolish it. You, you'll be blessing the Edison Township and the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Public comments? Yes. Uh, wait, 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 wait. Do we have a first timer? Yes, Charlie. Sorry, sorry. You can come back. After first timer.
You know, we, we share time here because it's all, in the end, it's all about the kids. I'm still trying to make up my time at the podium for missing January. Charles Ross, Principal Edison High School, Fifty Boulevard of the Eagles. I'm so glad that, you know, in the last meeting, we, and we talked about moving forward with the additions that are easing the overcrowding, supporting our music programs, and the way that we're expanding the academies at both of the high schools now with the comp side, the biomed, all of the different things that are opening up, having more STEM students. One of our STEM Academy students, Fajetta Gar, just won a hackathon at MIT. And that's after her sister graduated from there last year, another Edison High graduate. Uh, it's always been people first and programs seconds, you know, the people, including the, you know, the students, their families, that's what Edison's about. The teachers, the custodians, security, the district staff, the administrators. That's the core about what's great about the Edison Township School District. And there's pathways for every student to take a rigorous AP curricula. And Edison students from both Edison High and JP go on and soar at America's best universities. The people on the board are, you know, living proof of that, they know from their own kids, and so many of us here know that too. But nothing's more important to people than the health of the children. And I'm back again to remind everybody that our school district team is not just me, there's teachers, there's people from every unit, people from maintenance, custodians. We've got students involved. We're raising money for St. Baldrick's Foundation to fund research to stop children's cancer. I haven't gone to see local business shout-out, my Edison High alum Savannah at Salon Dulce Vita in, uh, Wick's Plaza. I won't have to go see her until the summer because on Saturday afternoon, along with some students, some staff from Edison High, we're all getting our head shaved. And we've been raising a, a ton of money. I made the auto shop teacher dress up as a leprechaun, sorry, Mr. Revan. You know, I got a student who's got the better, a better head of curly hair than anybody in this room, who's, who, who I'm bringing there, and he's going to get his head shaved. And when you guys see me next Tuesday at the board meeting, aside from telling you what's great about Edison High, you're going to see me clean shaving. And hopefully, I'll be able to tell you how much money as a team we all, um, raised to fight children's cancer. So please, you know, give as you can. There's nothing poor important, you know, than our kids, and I know that's why we do all of this stuff. The QR code is at the podium, or you can check it out on the way out. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay.
This is going to be a long one, so I don't know if I'm going to have enough time. So I apologize if I don't finish. Basically, I just want to put last week's.
Name, please.
Brian Rivera, Edison. So, good evening, everybody. At the January twenty-fifth meeting, I addressed the board as a member of the public for the first time in three years. I stated that it had been a long time since I had compared what the public, the public sees on the agendas to what the board education sees. I then asked the board to questions the bill's list considered privileged information. I acquired because I couldn't find it online when I searched for it. Jerry responded by stating that the bill's list is not privileged information and emphasized twice to me that you had nothing to hide. Um, since January, I have repeatedly stated at Board of Education meetings that sharing the bill list with the public before board approval is crucial for transparency, transparency, accountability, and community trust. Providing access to this information in advance allows taxpayers to review how their money is being spent and voice any questions or concerns before final decisions are being made. At the end of last month's meeting, Mr. President, you launched a tirade filled with spin and name-calling, defending Vishal Patel, your Vice President and Chair of the Finance Committee, who supported your bid for president. To remind everybody, Mr. Patel sued the board after rightfully refused to cover his personal legal fees costs incurred due to his own actions and actions as a board member. Despite multiple, uh, requests, the board considered rejecting Mr. Patel's attempts to use public funds for what we believe was inappropriate expenses. I want to remind the public that rather than covering his own legal costs, Vishal Patel dismissed his lawsuit, hoping that the newly configured board would rule in his favor. And that's exactly what happened. Members of this new board concealed a payment within the bill's list, which the public had no access to, and attempted to slip one by the goalie, and it was successful. While it was presented as routine business, the reality is that this was a political payback. This raises serious concerns about potential backroom deals, including board decisions, influencing board decisions. People often distort the truth, push their own agenda, but let's focus on the facts. Vishal Patel has a well-documented history of missing committee meetings and Board of Education meetings, after courting official minutes, which are publicly available for verification. Knowably, he was absent from a meeting while traveling to India for a hair appointment and missed another while skiing a vacation during, where he sustained a hand injury. However, despite his injury, he made sure to attend a reorganization meeting where he sought position as board president. After failing to secure the presidency, his attendance at subsequent meetings noticeably declined. Based on this information, the board president, Bureau Patel, invoked policy zero-one-four-five, which allows for the removal of the board member who misses three consecutive meetings with good cause. He met individually with board members to advocate for Vishal Patel's removal. Concerned about potential backlash from his community, Bureau Patel asked Vice President Joe Romano to lead the process, believing would not reflect well if one Indian board member removed another from an elected position. Romano carried out the request while Bureau Patel continued meeting with members to discuss Vishal Patel's character, actions as a board member, and attendance worker seeking for support for his removal. At the last board meeting, I was encouraged to file an Oprah request regarding the situation. I thank you, Jerry, for that, for the suggestion. And it led me to some information I wasn't previously aware of, and some of the, some of which was quite revealing. One of the key documents that I obtained was the email exchange between Vishal Patel and Bureau Patel, which Vishal asked Bureau to speak with our attorney, and Bureau essentially questioned why. Based on this decision, um, I don't understand how we paid legal fees, uh, based on this email. I think it's absurd. But I do have several questions. My first question is directly to Vishal Patel. Aside from that email, what other? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm trying to rush this. Pause my time, I got some, this is long. Thank you. I have several questions through Jerry to Vishal. Uh, aside from that email, what other correspondence did you have with Bureau Patel regarding this matter? Also, through Jerry to Vishal, did you contact the New Jersey School Boards Association? This is the organization that could have guided you through this process. This goes to Dr. Alde Rely and Mr. Toth. How many times have Vishal Patel's claims submitted to the insurance company? And were they approved or were they denied? And if they were denied, can you please explain to us why they were denied? Those are my questions for you two individuals. The reality is that Vishal Patel should have contacted New Jersey School Boards Association regarding this matter. He was informed that there was no mechanism to pay his attorney, and he chose not to listen. He ignored it. The School Boards Association would have advised him that since he was defending himself as an individual, he would typically be responsible for covering his own legal expenses. I know that because I reached out to school boards. The Board of Education's attorney is hired to represent the board as a whole and protect the district's interests, not those of an individual member. If the board is voting on removal, the attorney's duty is to, to remaining board members and the district. Creating a conflict of interest, defending the member facing removal while also advising the board on the matter would be an ethical violation. The attorney role is to ensure the removal process followed legal proceed guidelines, not to advocate for against the accused member. The reality is that Vishal Patel knew there was no mechanism for the board to cover his legal fees, but chose to ignore it. The board was not obligated to pay these costs. And I, I'm asking the board that maybe we should submit a demand letter for reimbursement. It should be considered. Can we pursue this? This is a situation, is, this, this situation is a clear example of why the bill list should be made public to ensure trust, transparency, and accountability. Thank you for your time.
See, I did allow you to go over six minutes.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. So, um, you want to address the, the bill list?
All right, so there is no statutory obligation, I'm sure, as you know, Mr. Rivera, to produce any draft to the public until the board votes on it and makes it final. The determination, um, of the board is that the bill list is draft, was not made public, it has not been made public, as far as I know, starting with this board. I can't speak really what happened before I was here. Um, so there is no statutory requirement. It is a draft. I am loathe to offer my opinion to publish a draft document that may or may not be passed. So now we would have two documents out there and a draft, providing a draft to the public, that may or may not pass in its entirety, uh, would be something that would be, it would be remiss of me to make that as a legal opinion.
No, no, no back and forth. So to, you, uh, you've been bringing this up for the past four, several months. But let, let me, uh, let, it's my, okay? I gave you more than six minutes, let you finish, let me finish. Okay? So the whole thing started is Vishal missed three meetings. Yes, he did. But if you look at the policy, it says the board member could be removed if you miss three meetings without good cause. He has good cause. And the policy did not say, you know, any of these three, uh, meetings if you miss, as long as you have one good cause, it doesn't apply. So he had three good causes why he missed a meeting. So. Talking about costs, okay, this is your colleague. You should help him. Okay, he has his family issues, has his personal issues. Instead of helping him, you guys started to remove him. The, the whole cost is started because of you guys' action. Okay? So, um, he should not be removed because based on the policy, it says, you know, without cause, but he has cause. That's first item. Second. As you mentioned, the, you know, the, the board attorney is for the board, it's not an individual. So he is entitled by law to seek opinions from board attorney. You have requested, you have requested the Oprah, you saw the communications. The communication said, you know, Vishal asked the board president, he wants to speak to the attorney. Okay, it was denied. It says, you can only send your question to me, so I'll forward to the attorney, or you talk to the attorney with me on the line, or me or Vice President on the line, which violates his policy, violates his rights. Okay, that's number two. Number three. You guys voted here on one of the Tuesdays to have a hearing for his removal. So by law, he is entitled to legal representation. Since you're not giving him the representation from the board attorney, he has to go out, seek, uh, attorney for his, for his rights. So if you're talking about the cost of this, it's because you guys. You guys caused the cost. Okay? If you want to pay, you should pay for it. You guys should pay for it. Okay? At the end of the day, what happened? You had a meeting to, uh, to have a hearing, and then you decided not to, to do anything. Okay? It's your action caused all the legal fees. All right? So you, as far as you talk about, is that his personal expense? No, it's not personal expense. It's a board action against another board member. I gave you another example about other board members who had issues. Yeah. So, yeah, hearing was notified by board attorney. So it was, it was a hearing. So he is entitled to legal representation, period. Okay? Uh, what, what? Excuse me. Okay? So if you want to talk about costs, it's all your fault. It's, it's because your irresponsible actions by you guys. Okay? So, at the end of the day, the thirty-five hundred dollars. And I, you know, even if he was wrong, even if he was wrong, it's a business decision. It does not warrant, you know, all having attorneys continue to fight for this. It does not make any sense. You talk about submitting to, uh, the risking, uh, insurance. We have a five thousand dollar deductible anyway. So whether they accept, they do not accept, board has to pay anyway. So I don't know what the argument is. You've been bringing for the past four months, you know, for this. The board has tried to move forward with a lot of good things. And we try to, you know, academically, all the academies and all the other stuff, we'll try to, you know, achieve our long-term goals. And we, we are achieving a zero percent tax increase, you know, for, for, for the new school year. And something like this, you know, I hope this, this is the last time I hear, but if you want to continue to, uh, bring it up, feel free. Okay? But this is my point. The whole cost is because the action from you guys who caused it. Whoever, who, excuse me, excuse me. Please, please. You have, I, I'll give you a rebuttal. Just remember, last year, the board had no rebuttal. Okay? I gave you rebuttal. All right? At least say something positive for that. Okay? So, uh, anyway, uh, that's my response to you. All right, if you have other questions, you can send your question to Dr. Huss, we'll be happy to address them. All right? So any other, uh, public comments? Any, any, uh, any first timers? Yeah.
Anthony Diamon, Wiley Ave. The, uh, the building at Herbert Hoover, uh, there's a, there's a structure, I believe it's off of Lydell, at the, where the, where Lydell meets the Greenway. Is that our, is that your Board of Ed building, or is that a, you know, it's, you know which one I'm talking about? It's like an old building, small. Yeah, so, um. The, uh, I just, that was the first question. Is, is second question, um, or suggestion regarding Hoover. I was, uh, recently at a council meeting about a week or so ago, and I brought this up, uh, to, uh, the police officer that was there, captain or lieutenant, uh, regarding the traffic at Hoover. Um, and I know the administration at Town Hall wants to, uh, eminent domain or basically widen the road, which I think is, uh, not going to do very much. I brought up the suggestion of, of if you, if they decided to not make, not allow any vehicle to make a left or a right down Jackson Avenue for, let's say, an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. Instead, route all the traffic to Coolidge and Hoover Ave, which then goes to Wagner, left onto Wagner, and it goes right into Hoover. And then what you do is basically, you, buses and could go right around the, you know, basically around that U, and then right down Jackson Avenue. And no traffic will come that way. So I don't know if that's possible. They like the idea, they actually, the traffic guys, they, so, um, I don't know with tractor-trailers, you know, I don't know how you work that out, but they're going to look into it. I don't know, something maybe to follow up on. Um, but also, I, I'd like to see, you know, the Greenway is right there. You have the Greenway, and there's a lot of children that live in my neighborhood, which I'm on the Ford side of Woodbridge Avenue. Right, I'm actually right next to the Greenway, I might, a block away from the Greenway entrance. And it's a shame because you don't, I brought this up before previously, you know, you don't have kids utilizing that Greenway. It's a straight shot right down to Hoover. It's, it's, there's no cars. The only problem is, is you got to cross over Woodbridge Avenue. So if you had a crossing guard at that location there, you would have a lot of kids, um, you know, and you would, you would eliminate a lot of cars and traffic, you know, uh, car, vehicle traffic, um, that will, you know, would help out with the traffic over there instead of, again, taking people's property. But, um, I have another suggestion as well, I'll save that for another day. I'll save that for another day, maybe next week. But just a couple of things, that's that's it. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. We're looking into this property and just make sure, based on, you know, the feedback from the folks, it does not belong to us, but we're looking into it. And yeah, it's a good suggestion of using the Greenway just to come to school. But you know nowadays that, you know, parents want to drop their kids right in front of the school, right in front of the building. Okay, for some reason, okay? And I don't know why, but you know, yeah. I hope that the principal can communicate to the parents, there's another way to come to school, to walk a couple of steps, especially when the weather is warmer, and it's good for them. So, you know, thank you for suggestions and, you know, the the traffic pattern that we you know, we were able to work with township, you know, to make it, you know, certain hours, the rush hours, they don't come in. And I I know that street, it's very narrow. You got an 18-wheeler coming, there's no way you can go anywhere. It's just one way. So I hope that also the enforcement, you know, from the EPD on that, that will help. So thank you for suggestions and, you know, you have another piece of information, you want to hold it for next meeting? Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, you want to come second time? Any first timers? Okay. Anthony.
Yeah, so another idea, of course, I am looking for this program called Bike to School, Bike to School, right? And I spoke to mayor last week, and we thought that this could be program which help to make our kids healthy livings from beginning. So what this program I see in when I was going to California, that all the paths goes towards school have a small zone of green zone of two feet or three feet wider, where kids can ride their bike or scooters to the school, right? And it brings good choices, right? So is there a possibility that we can work with the Board of Education or somebody from your office, right, with the mayor's office together? I'm happy to volunteer my time to find the path and locate those paths where we can make a small green zone by bike, small biker, not motorbike, scooter bike or small. And and think and work out. So that's bring a healthy living in Edison Township.
Okay, agree. So yeah, it's a fine opportunity to get that worked out. I I do see that we have quite a lot of kids use the bikes already. If we can, you know, expand that, that'll be great. And there's one thing I actually I mentioned to some of the council members is, since you you talked about it, it's about sidewalks. I did mention to them if they can pass a ordinance for all the new house, new houses that have been built to add the sidewalk as a requirement. Because I see in my neighborhood, I live behind John Adams, and if you look at Mount Pleasant, multiple new houses has been built, but several of these brand-new houses have no sidewalk. So and the kids walk from John Adams home using, you know, Mount Pleasant. So if if anyone from the council is watching this, I hope that you can reconsider, you know, consider my suggestion is, you know, grandfather for the others, but any of the new houses when they build, put a sidewalk in. If they actually put it in the sidewalk, we will have a sidewalk on the other side. So, you know, good suggestions, and we'll definitely look into it. Thank you very much. Okay? Yeah, Matt.
Before I start on my second piece here, there's two things I just want to mention. Number one, unfortunately, I went to a funeral home yesterday. Edison lost another one of our finest English teacher AP teacher Denise Weigle passed away, longtime staff member of JP Stevens. So may she rest in peace. Secondly, I just want to piggyback Dr. Alderelli's with Read Across America. I'm fortunate, one of the things I love about being president, I can only get to one or two buildings as a teacher, now I'm able to get to pretty much all of them. It's a wonderful, wonderful experience. Right now, we have the art competition going on for Read Across America, which we'll be finishing this week, tomorrow. You might want to mark it down, although I will send you all an email inviting you to the Read Across America celebration that we throw, award ceremony over at Ben Franklin School on April 30th at, I believe it's 6:30, but I'll let you know in the email. Okay. I know I have about two minutes plus my minute fifty. Hopefully, I'll get it done in that time. If not, I just ask for your patience. So hello again, Matt Revneck, ETA president. I want to speak to you about an event that took place, or in our case, did not take place yesterday. You may have heard or seen about a walk-in that occurred nationwide yesterday. The purpose of the walk-in was directed from our national affiliation, the National Education Association, or NEA as it's known. The purpose of the walk-in was to take a stance in support of public education, and the intent is to get staff, parents, students, and the community members involved in support of public education. I am not here to play politics. This is not about being Republican, a Democrat, or independent. If it was a Republican president doing the same thing, I'd be standing up here giving the same speech. However, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Democrat. Excuse me. Slip of the tongue. I also want to emphasize that education, however, is governed by political entities. We are governed by laws and funding, which is appropriated through politicians. That being said, this is about public education. It is clear, based upon statements by the president, Secretary of Education Linda McMahon, and as listed in Project 2025, that the dismantling of the Department of Education, as well as the push on charter schools, school vouchers, and privatization is part of the platform. If these things come to fruition, it would take away necessary funds from our public schools, and that would be devastating to public education. If that were to happen, it would have a negative impact on school programs, especially pertaining to our special needs programs, but it can also have a trickle-down effect to other programs as well. So you may ask, why didn't the ETA participate in a walk-in? We were never informed of the walk-in until last Thursday night with little direction. Through discussion with members of my executive committee, the decision was made that we just did not have enough time to properly organize this activity. I did ask my members to wear their ETA unity shirts, which we have in either red or blue, and if they did not have a ETA unity shirt, to just wear the color red and blue. By the way, that night, I also did text Dr. Alderelli. I informed him of this, invited the administration to do as well, as well as Mr. Ross for the administrators, and part of that so as they weren't blindsided to why all of a sudden teachers would like doing this or not doing it. We also took into effect other possible effects of a walk. We did not wish to be negatively perceived as a job action, because there's no reason for us to do a job action. This is not an issue with our administration, the school board, or the school community. In fact, we want these groups to be on board with us, as this is about our students and the Edison community. We also did not wish to affect the operations of the school or to possibly make buses late to school, students late to school, or parents late to work. So we took all the stakeholders into consideration. However, in the future, we will most likely participate as requested by our parent organizations, the NEA or the NJA. We hope that if this were to occur, the parents and community would join us in solidarity for the benefit of our schools, our students, and the Edison community. If this does occur in the near future, we will have a structure in place so that we can get this information out to our members and to the other stakeholders in the Edison community with an invitation to join us. And in closing, if anyone is concerned with the effects on public education, one of the things you can do is reach out to your senators and your members of Congress to discuss your concerns about potential attacks on public education via email or call their office. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, second timer? Okay, Brian.
Jerry, I do want to thank you. I appreciate the time. It's not always hostile between you and I. I actually like you and respect you. I just comment the way that you comment to me. It's called fair is fair. All right. So let's go back to, I always ask questions and they never get answered. So Vishal, I know you don't have to answer my questions, but I did direct questions to Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth. Again, how many times was Vishal Patel's claim submitted to the insurance carrier? Were they approved or were they denied? And if they were denied, can you please explain why? And now that I have time, I'm going to continue speaking about something else now that I have time.
It's a rebuttal, right? Rebuttal.
It deals with the same thing. Now I got more time to finish, so I appreciate the time. At last, again, deals with the bills. We were talking about money. So at the last Board of Education meeting, the amounts of legal fees that were accrued by board members was discussed. There was a bill for $6,480.50. It was mentioned, and it was linked to Mr. Romano. While there was another bill for $22,129.11, but there was no name mentioned without specific association. So once again, I was encouraged to file an Oprah. Thank you, Jerry, on this information, and I uncovered jaw-dropping information. While only two bill payments were mentioned at the meeting, only one individual was singled out. However, I received their records, and there was four names that were given to me. The $22,129.11 bill was linked to Bureau Patel. Mohan Patel had a bill for $116, and then Jerry had a bill for $5,147. I find it interesting, last month, only Joe Romano's name was mentioned. To me, it felt it was a clear attempt just to smear Joe's name. I am particularly astonished by the amount of Bureau Patel. So I have five, six questions here. How many ethics complaints contribute to $22,129 in legal fees? Are these complaints ethics-related? What are the specific complaints, and what are the costs for each? Are there any open ethics complaints? If so, will there be additional legal fees? And are the the legal fees for the other individuals listed or finalized, or should we expect more payment from the board? So I just gave you nine questions, and I have 20 seconds, six seconds left. I figured if I stand here, maybe they'll get answered.
Probably not.
Or am I dreaming?
You can sit down. I'll answer you. So why Joe was today brought up? Because you're talking about individual expenses. That was example. Okay? That's why Joe's name was brought up. You were correct. Okay? Transparency, nothing to hide. Yes. The $22,000 change is for Bureau. And yes, I also incurred $5,000 charge. It's because Tony D. Pascal filed an ethic charge on me. It was a bogus charge, and was dropped and, you know, at the end. Okay? And you mentioned about Mohan? Yes. There was something about $100 something. Okay? And how many ethics charges filed for Bureau? I tell you, there are four. Okay? Two cases has been settled, and two are ongoing. So so you know the answer, whether there will be more expenses or not. So I'm very transparent. I have nothing to hide. All right? So I think I answered all your questions. So do we have any other public comments? No, they don't need to answer it. But at the end of the day, I told you, it's $5,000 deductible for every case. They don't have to answer it, you know? You can send the questions to Dr. Huss, we'll get back to you. I'm not going to, that's not not back and forth.
You just want to answer my questions.
You had your three minutes.
I answered all your questions.
We shouldn't be having back and forth. Anyway, it's very difficult for the transcript, so please.
Yeah.
Please just.
Okay. So do we have any other public comments, second timers? Seeing none? Can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Arago and Mr. Romano, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll open up for board member comments. Any board members, anything you want to say? Yes, Chris.
Thank you, President Shi. Dr. Alderelli, I believe I had a conversation with you, and I believe you said that Bureau's case was denied twice from when it was submitted to insurance. For Vishal, for Vishal, I'm asked to answer your question. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I could say that I was told twice. And maybe that, I mean, I could, if it's not correct, you can feel free to jump in and correct me, that's fine. But I can at least say that.
Any other board member comments? Yes, Joe.
The other day, I was invited to the opening of a cricket establishment. I just have to tell you that the kids were having a great time. It's a facility, I can't tell you the name.
Titans.
And I, for fear of saying it, and I would be, I was saying that a board member was saying that, you know, that's this is another place. But I just wanted you to know, the kids, the whole thing is the kids. They had a great time. The kids were learning how to play. The parents that were there were very, very understanding. They explained everything to me. And Dr. A, if there's any way that our students, you know, could use those facilities, you know, transportation from the schools, you know, not for nothing, kids to learn how to play, it's that's a great thing. I know that we have facilities that are under construction right now, or sports fields. And I know for a fact that, you know, not for nothing, if maybe once a week or what have you, maybe we could work on that as, you know, something that we could do. I'm telling you, that to me is a great program. The Edison Jets, I just wanted you to know that that facility is almost ready, the field is almost ready. And maybe we could reach out to them, or they could reach out to us for a little help. They might need a little help getting some things together. Number two, no, no, it's number three. Numbers, I'm sorry, Jerry. The Edison, the North Edison Library, right now, has been moved to Oak Tree Road. It's right across from the old Edison Family Restaurant. That construction's probably going to go on for about 17 months. Okay, there's they're naked, they're expanding the walls and everything. It's going to be a great, great asset to the to the town. Also, the main library, they're having some issues over there, where they're actually remodeling one floor of it. That one floor is almost done. So I just want you to know, Doc, they're doing a great job. And as far as I know, according to what I was, the information I was given, there's no cost overruns. I mean, that's a big thing. Okay? And I just want everybody to realize, if you can, call up, go on the website, and get a library card. I mean, reading, that old saying, reading is fundamental, but we have libraries, we have facilities that students could use. So please, get a library, get a library card, visit the library. You'll really be surprised at what we do and what we're going through over there at the expansions. Thank you, Mr. Shi. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jenny.
Okay, I'll be quick. All right. We went to, I was invited to, and so were the other board members, to Herbert Hoover Middle School for their youth participating action research. It's Y-P-A-R. Okay? And they had a group of students there that had questions, and they fielded them with Senator Deignan, who was so generous with his time who was so generous with his time and his stories of his past, and, you know, but the questions that these students came up with were really amazing. They asked very, very important questions, and, you know, and he took the time with each and every one of them, and, you know, explained and added, and tried to guide them in the right direction. It was well worth the time. I think we were there maybe, what, an hour, hour and a half? It was worth every, every minute, you know? And I would be so happy to go again to see, you know, what they're going to come up with next. It's a new group, and, you know, if we get invited again, you should really try and make it. The other thing is, I went to Edison High School's play. They did the Adams Family, it was a musical. And I wish you could have been there. I mean, our students are so, so talented. I mean, they, they were just, they were just great. I enjoyed that so, so much. And the music pit, the, the people that are in that pit are either alumni, teachers, you know, that are on their own time, friends of teachers. And it was just, it was just beautiful. The show was great, and, you know, it had to be so successful for them. And lastly, I was at Edison High School again, and that was last night. I went for their varsity awards for winter sports. And, you know, it's amazing, our athlete, our programs are so, so good. Our athletes are incredibly talented. You know, we have so many state qualifiers and, you know, and beyond. And, you know, it was, you know, I just love going there to see how, what a good job they all do. And it was good. But I, everything I did was on the South End, sorry. Next time, I'll go to the North End.
It's closer.
I'll try and share myself, you know? I'm waiting for JP Stevens' play to come to Edison High School, because, you know, we're under construction.
Yes, yes.
But Edison High did great, you know, but thank you. Thank you for listening.
Well, Mr. Ross echoed your, your statement. Oh, next Thursday and Friday, JP.
Next Thursday and Friday?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I don't see anybody's hair shaved. I mean, really, you know, not for nothing, I mean, you know, I had to do mine, you know, mine was done. You know, I mean, you actually were the ones who said, hey, Mr. Romano, how about getting your hair done? I mean, so, you know, I'm still waiting, buddy. Okay.
So Joe, you can, you can join him on Saturday?
I can join him, right? Yeah. Okay, sir. Thank you. Thanks for, thank you. Thank you for everything, really, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, to answer your question, Mr. Lugo, as I mentioned, that there's a $5,000 deductible, so it doesn't matter whether the insurance company accepts or not, there's a $5,000 deductible. But I'm going to ask, you know, Mr. Toth or Dr. Alderelli to address the question of why.
Yeah, I, I think your question was the rationale for it being, the claim being denied.
I think it was sent, submitted twice at two different times.
Yep.
And the, I think the correspondence was, it was related to it being a valid 18A claim.
18A claim.
That's what the correspondence was.
Okay, thank you. All right. So there, there's no back and forth. Come on, okay? You can talk about this. You understand, when you were sitting here, right? So, hope you honor that. Hope you honor that. And anybody else? Okay? See none? We're going to go to the adjourn to a privileged session. Come on, Ralph. Ralph, it's a public meeting. You jumped the gun. So according to NJSA Section 14, 10 dot 4 dash 12, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following. Yeah, confidential personnel and board matters, contracts, pending litigation, student matters, legal matters. So can I have a motion to adjourn to privileged session?
Motion to, uh, to adjourn to public session.
Okay. Mrs. White? Okay. Mr. Romano, Mrs. White? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we plan to come back for Tuesday? No, we, we don't, we don't have any actions, so see you guys on Tuesday in John Adams. John Adams next Tuesday, all right? Thank you.